We'll call tonight's meeting to order. Today is Monday, May the 11th, and this is our regular monthly meeting at 6:00 P.M. Because we attempted this last time, and we were talking over each other for the Pledge of Allegiance, I will say the Pledge of Allegiance and hope that I don't do the bad thing and mess it up. So if you would like to join us, please do so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Huntley, would you like to bless our meeting?
Okay. Our heavenly Father, as we gather here representing our town, we pray that you would give us the wisdom we need to carry out the wisdom of our people, our wishes of our people. We pray that you would be with us in this period of national distress. In these things we pray, in the holy name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Thank you all for joining us as we are continuing to meet via video. I'm hopeful that in the near term we'll be able to actually be in the same room with one another. I'll be really happy when this event is over. So council members, you have the minutes of our April 14, 2020, meeting before you. Do we have any changes, deletions, or additions?
I move for approval.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Mr. Huntley, how do you vote?
A.
Mr. Shirey?
Four.
Okay. Cook?
Approved.
Okay. Ronnie?
Approved.
Chris? Mr. Moody? Trudy?
Approved.
All right, and I will approve also. Mr. Moody, are you back on? We seem to have lost Mr. Moody for a second. So we'll, we'll give that an approval and move forward. Public comment. Public comments may be submitted in writing to the town via mail, 200 Tom Hall Street, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29715, or email, v. Burgess, B-U-R-G-E-S-S, at fortmillsc.gov. When submitting a comment, please include your name and address for the record. All public comments received at least one hour prior to the start of the meeting will be presented to Town Council by staff during the information discussion portion of the meeting. What do I hear? Am I getting some feedback? We're good?
Good.
Okay. Davie, do you have public questions for us?
Yes, Mayor, we have one from Mr. Al Rogat. He resides at 1,006 Crest Haven Lane, Fort Mill, Carolina, 29715.
Okay.
His comment is, although the parks are closed, could we open the walking trail through Walter Elisha Park?
Okay. Interesting that we have some of that discussion on our agenda this evening and have been talking about that. I do not believe, and Davie, you can correct me, I do not believe that we have stopped anyone from walking through the trails, and I'm pretty certain at our last council meeting, we discussed that. We have restricted groups larger than the governor allows, and we have restricted access to the playground equipment because we just don't have any way to clean it as often as it would be used. So I, I think if Mr. Rogat is on our call, if you'll just hang on a little bit, further down in our agenda, we'll be discussing some changes and some additional opportunities for our community. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Alrighty then. Presentation number one. Update on events, Chris Sardelli and Jocana Hester. We're going to hear about a recap of virtual strawberry festival and information on upcoming Memorial Day event. Chris, I see you on the line. Is Jocana on the call as well?
Jocana is. Hi, Jocana.
Yes, I'm here. Hey, hey, everybody.
Hi. Move ahead.
We're going to start off, okay, we're going to start off with our 2020 virtual strawberry festival recap. Virginia uploaded some statistics that, a little bit earlier today, but I'm just going to start going over that. Due to the current COVID-19 crisis, the town had to cancel this year's festival to keep our employees, our visitors, and communities safe. So to keep the spirit of the festival alive and to provide a fun outlet for our residents, the town created its first virtual strawberry festival with a week of exciting contests, activities, queens, vendors, and more. We were very excited to host this event, and we feel it created a positive diversion during this time. The virtual festival was held April 25 to May 2nd, the same dates as our traditional festival week of events. The week included several interactive online contests. We had our strawberry idol singing contest with 20 participants. Our strawberry art contest with 44 participants. A virtual strawberry bingo with 53 participants. A virtual car show photo contest with 39 participants, as well as a virtual word search scavenger hunt and recipe video contest. Also featured was a virtual trivia contest, which was partnered with the Fort Mill History Museum and Springs Farm. The virtual event also featured messages from our outgoing and incoming strawberry queens. We spotlighted our downtown merchants and strawberry jam applicants, which we had 27 participants in that. Our festival sponsors, which we had 35 sponsors for our previously planned 2020 festival, and our South Carolina strawberry festival vendors, of which there were 100 who applied and wanted to be a part of our virtual festival. We also featured the Dixieland Cruisers of Rock Hill and the Elks Club of Fort Mill. They were our scheduled event hosts for our previously planned strawberry blossom car show. Our top events were our strawberry idol, strawberry art contest, our virtual strawberry bingo, our virtual car show, and our strawberry vendor village applicant. Our 2020 virtual festival announcement, our queen's farewell and queen's welcome videos ranked high views from 1,200 to 3,000. Our 2020 virtual festival announcement videos, strawberry idol, strawberry art contest, our virtual car show, and our queen's welcome had the highest engagement. And some of the comments we received from the public were, "This is such a great idea. I've enjoyed just seeing all the strawberry week posts each day. I've bought over three gallons of strawberries to celebrate, and thank you for doing this." So we reached thousands of people every day of the festival week, providing an outlet for positive news and spirit during a difficult time. We are proud of the positive impact made, and we look forward to 2021 being the best strawberry festival ever. And attached in your, on your iPad, we have listed our statistics showing the number per event post, the number reached each day, the engagement, the shared posts, and then the views for all the festival videos. And also in that list will have more details of the participants and the winners and the prizes for those contests. So we just thank y'all for allowing us to do it, and we think it turned out pretty good.
Well, I for one am just very, very pleased and proud of the creativity, the hard work, short timeframe, and turning around something that was indeed positive and fun for our community in such a time of stress. Thank you, Jocana, Chris, and all of the town employees, the strawberry queens, and all of those that participated in, in this offering. And hopefully, we won't have to do it that way again, but just, just nice to know it was very successful this time, and I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Let's see. Council members, do you have any questions for Chris or Jocana? Mr. Huntley?
No, I do not.
Mr. Shirey?
I do not.
Ms. Cook? Ronnie?
I do not.
Chris?
I do not.
Okay, thank you, Chris Moody. Okay, and Trudy?
I was just going to say I was very impressed with all the different ideas that came out of it. I was, I kept checking on it every day. I didn't really participate, but somebody did have some creativity with everything.
Isn't that wonderful? Well, thank you so much. Thank you, Jocana and Chris.
Thank y'all.
Chris, I think you're going to cover information on the upcoming Memorial Day event?
Um, yes. We were going to discuss just a little bit about what that event was going to entail, and I'll let Jocana also tell you a little bit more about the overall plan and where we're headed. So Jocana, did you want to just go through basically what the agenda will be for that event?
Yeah. Well, of course, due to the uncertainty of the guidelines going forward for our community gatherings, we have decided to do a virtual Memorial Day ceremony. And we feel like we've planned an event that will both honor and remember all those that have lost their lives while serving in the U.S. military, as well as commemorate Memorial Day on May 25. So our virtual Memorial Day ceremony will include a welcome and opening statement by our mayor, an opening prayer, the posting of colors. The flag of allegiance will have songs, the national anthem, and another patriotic song. Our Memorial Day message, a poem by our South Carolina strawberry queens, a lane of the reef, hats, retirement of colors, and then closing statements by our mayor. And we are going to work together with our town videographer, Tony McMahon, to video our participants at different times using social distancing guidelines, doing their portion of the ceremony. And then Tony will put together all the components into one video that's going to be shown on our town social media in channel 115 on Memorial Day, beginning at 9:00 A.M. And then also at 3:00 P.M. on Memorial Day, we are going to do a special post about the national moment of remembrance, and we will allow the public to post a name and branch of service of someone they wish to honor on our town Facebook and Instagram accounts. And we are working with our local organizations on their participating in this event. And the American Legion Post 43 is going to be a huge part of this. They're very excited about being able to be a part again this year. And our Memorial Day message will be from Colonel Sean McKay of the U.S. Marine Corps. He's retired, and he is also the senior marine instructor for Nationport High School Marine Corps, J.R.O.T.C. And also, South Carolina House Representative Ray Fodor will be a part of our event.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for the hard work to put all that together so that we can continue to make that offering to our community and that giving of thanks to our, our military. Thank you so much. Questions, council members? I'll start with Trudy.
I have none.
Chris Moody?
None.
Ronnie? Ronnie?
I have none.
Lisa?
I don't have any at this time.
Jamie?
When are we going to start pushing information out so that the public will know when they can put names on the Facebook page?
We'll push the message out soon. We're, we're just waiting for confirmation of a few more participants, but we're hoping to have that out soon, this week.
Okay.
So this, this week, we, excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I was going to say Chris is going to do a press release first, and then we will start advertising.
Okay. And that will give how much time for people to see that and get their, their information in?
Hopefully, just under two weeks. So we'll have, looks like plenty of time to get people recorded and give Tony a few days to put the package together. And he's going to try and just put the whole program together. And we're offering participants a chance to either go out to a location such as Memorial Park, and we can film it with some social distancing, or if they don't feel comfortable with that, we'll take them and bring it at home. And then Tony's going to take all that information. We're going to put it together as just a virtual ceremony. So we're hoping to line everyone up within the next day or so. We have most participants, and then we're going to schedule Tony to get those people filmed or have those people film themselves, and then we'll go from there.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Huntley, did you have any questions?
I have one question. The rules on this thing are changing almost daily. If we get to Memorial Day and you don't have any more limitations, you could have, you know, an open. Have we given that any consideration?
I think with two weeks, you know, we really, I, I agree with you, Mr. Huntley. It seems like every day we're seeing something different. But I do think, unfortunately, for our sake, we must make decisions two weeks in advance so that we can give the time needed for arrangements. And that's just my opinion. Anybody else?
No, I agree.
I also agree.
I also agree.
I'm saying, agree with that.
Okay.
One of the issues we found in planning the event too is just having the appropriate infrastructure, so the sound and audio, and any designated seating or tents, and a lot of that is difficult to do closer to the time. So I know we wanted to just go forward probably with the virtual just to make sure that we had enough time to get everything together.
And it's certainly one way to avoid any inclement weather. You know, we've, we've had that before, and it is certainly an opportunity for us to ensure that the program takes place. Okay? All right. Any further questions or comments? Okay, so we do not have any old business items, so we will move to new business item number one, first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the town of Fort Mill, Article 2, Requirements by District, Section 9, HC Highway Commercial District, so as to establish requirements for hospitals as a conditional use within the HC district and to provide other matters relating thereto. Penelope is our expert. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion accepting business item number one.
Okay, I have, I heard Jamie Shirey make the motion, and Trudy and Ronnie seconded it. Penelope, has there, would you like to talk to us about this?
Sure, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. This is an amendment to establish requirements for the hospitals as a conditional use within the Highway Commercial District. There are four conditions that we've added. At the Planning Commission meeting, there were some recommendations. They wanted us to change a word from May to shall for the maximum building height shall be 75 feet. And they also had, the second condition is a minimum lot area 15 acres shall be required if the site is to include a helipad or helipad. The third item, they modified, basically, the location of the helipad shall have a separation requirement of 500 feet from any existing building not owned by the applicant at the time the site plan is approved by the town. And what they changed, and we agree with, they also put a minimum of 500 feet from any adjacent property line zone for residential. This was just better clarification. And then they added a fourth condition to have the location of the helipad shall have a separation requirement of 500 feet from any road right of way. And again, this is a conditional use for the hospitals in the actual Highway Commercial District. Staff recommended and agrees with the Planning Commission's modification to the recommendation. And the public hearing will be held on June 8th at second reading.
Okay, June 8th during our second reading, public hearing. Okay, Trudy, do you have any questions or comments for Penelope?
I do not.
Chris Moody?
No.
Ronnie?
I'm good.
Lisa?
Yep, Penelope, is there a reason that we're leaning towards a separate helipad versus on top of the building? Just preference, or?
Well, we, we did some research with other surrounding, like the city of Rock Hill and Newberry County, you know, and then city of Charlotte. And really, they didn't have anything that required them to be on top. A lot of them had the separation distance with, like, city of Rock Hill and Newberry County, but they did not say they preferred on top. It's, it's more expensive to put it on top of the building, but what we saw with the research, a lot of municipalities are basically allowing it, but just to be able to protect residential uses with a separation distance.
So could they still do it on the building, or it would have to be separate, given these reading that we're doing for the ordinance?
Well, I mean, based on if, you know, it doesn't really say anything about not allowing it, but based, if they are going to put a helipad, it has to have that separation distance, if that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Jamie?
Does that 500 feet from the roadway, does that include the buffer from the road also? That total number is at 500, or is a buffer added to the 500?
No, this is, the fourth condition is to the right of way of the road.
Okay.
So like 160, like if I, if I use the site for the potential hospital at 160 and 21, it would be the right of way, the helipad has to be 500 feet away from the right of way from 160 and also 21.
Okay.
Okay. Larry?
I have nothing.
Okay. Any further questions for Penelope? Hearing none. We have a motion on the table to approve and a second. How say you, Lisa?
I approve.
Jamie?
I approve.
Mr. Huntley?
I approve.
Ronnie?
Approve.
Chris Moody?
Approve.
Trudy?
Approve.
And I also approve, so that's a unanimous vote for new business item number one. Thank you very much. New business item number two, Amendment of Agreement to Fund Municipal Court Attorney for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Davie Broome is our expert. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion accepting business item number two.
Do I have a second? Okay. Davie, would you like to speak to us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a brief background on this. Back in 2015, South Carolina General Assembly passed a proviso which stated if a municipality had a municipal or municipal court, that they must provide counsel for indigent, indigent defendants. So back from that time, you had the municipalities in York County, Rock Hill, Fort Mill, Tegucay, city of York, and city of Clover that entered into an agreement with the 16th Circuit Public Defender's Office with York County to provide those services for each of us. Up until last year, it worked really well, but the city of Rock Hill was providing or producing so many cases that they, they qualified to have an attorney dedicated just to their cases. So that, they moved and did their, did their own thing and provided their own attorney for that, which left Fort Mill, Tegucay, city of York, and city of Clover working in, with the same agreement. You know, we tried to make this agreement as fair as possible. So we with a plan on how the funds and formula should be provided on who funds what for this. We, the best solution was to take a three-year average of the caseload for each municipality. So we started with a, a base amount of $8,500 per municipality, and then based on the caseload for that three-year average, factored in the remaining amount percentage-wise. So for the town of Fort Mill, for the next budget year, for 2021 budget year, our amount will be $10,229 for this agreement. What this provides us is a consistent and professional defense of our indigent caseloads. And so I'm, staff is requesting or recommending that we move forward with entering into this agreement for one fiscal year with York County 16th, or 16th Circuit Public Defender's Office.
How does the $10,229 compare with last year?
The amount was, I think we were right at $9,000 last year, so it's, it went up a little bit. But after reviewing the possibility of going out on our own and contracting these services, the group, well, the group looked at that possibility together to see if we could save money. But for the timeframe that everyone was under, this was the best, this is our best agreement. You know, again, we're going to take a look at it for next year, but again, everyone's very comfortable with, with the, with York County Public Defenders. And again, overall, because of the professional services they provide, it provides us that safety net and minimal chances of any, you know, liability lawsuits.
Okay. We'll start with Ronnie. Do you have questions?
I do not.
Chris Moody?
None.
Trudy?
Davie, you may have answered the question already, but how many participants or how many cases did they have in the last year?
Well.
Did you provide that information already?
I have four. Let me see, the overall, I think it was, we had E-plus, Tegucay was at 90-plus, and then you had York and Clover that I think their average was closer to 300 each. And that's why their, their costs are greater than town of Fort Mills. We have the, the least cost of the group.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Lisa?
Yeah, so Davie, or Shontae maybe even, I'm assuming this is coming out of general fund, correct? Which heading is it coming out of? If I'm looking at the budget, do we know? Is it under the attorney fees? Unmute Shontae.
It comes out of the, it's under the municipal court's budget.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And, and Ms. Cook, the, the York County is, they operate on a July 1 timeframe, so this is for their next budget year. We would, upon approval tonight, would allow us, we would just put this funding in our 2021 budget for the October 1 timeframe.
Okay. Gotcha. So no catch-up this year for that?
Right.
Where was the 80, where did the 8,500 originate from?
That's the, that was the base amount. There were five scenarios provided to the group. Trying to find the, the fairest agreement for all so that we didn't leave it out looking. And so the $8,500 base amount was, was agreed upon by the group.
Okay, and then just tacked on the caseload to get the averages?
Right. Average, three-year average caseload.
Okay. Is that 2015 to 18 or 16 to 19 or just wondering?
That should be 16 through 19.
Okay.
17, 18 and 19.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Huntley, did you have a question?
I have no questions.
Mr. Shirey, I don't believe I caught you on the way across.
I have no question.
All righty. The motion on the table is to approve new business item number two, and we have a second. We'll start with Lisa, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mr. Shirey?
I approve.
Mr. Huntley?
Approve.
Ronnie?
Approve.
Chris?
Approve.
Trudy?
Approve.
And I also approve, so that makes it a unanimous decision for new business item number two. New business item number three, council to consider agreement with Fort Mill School District for purpose of participating in the state-funded school resource officer program. This is a very exciting and happy item, so I'll entertain a motion before Mr. Broom starts talking to us about it.
I make a motion accept new business item number three.
And you shared the motion and we've had a second. Davey, tell us the happy news.
Mayor, I agree. This is a, you know, staff really enjoys bringing win-win opportunities to town council for your, for your approval. But what this is, is the, is the state-funded school resource officer program. It was brought to our attention recently. Our chief Helms has been working with the Fort Mill School District on this program. Basically what it is, the state offers up school resource officers for new schools that not have a school resource officer assigned to them. The school district, Fort Mill School District had to apply for this program and they were approved through the state for four new school resource officers. In order to receive those, they had to work with the, with local municipal police force. So they were working with Chief Helms on that. We are, you know, we provided them a list of items that would be needed for these officers to get them up and running and operating. You know, the, the state is, it's a recurring, has recurring funds, so the state's going to pay their salaries on an annual basis. So town of Fort Mill does not have to pay any money out for that, for their salaries. They will be on our staff, but we do not have to pay their salaries. The school district receives four school resource officers at their schools. And, you know, once we provide the school district with the equipment and needs to get these officers up and running, they have agreed to fund that equipment. So it's a, it's a win-win for both Fort Mill School District and the town of Fort Mills. So we are very excited to get started with it. And it's a program that would begin upon a town council. You know, we would move forward to have everything in place, ready to go by the new school year.
Such fantastic news and good working relationship to provide a vital service to our community and our children. I'm so grateful for all of the hard work and for the existing SROs. You know, you got to stop and think, if they didn't do such a stellar job, I don't think we would have been able to secure funding to continue the same type of work. So wonderful job. Mr. Huntley, do you have any question or comment?
No question.
Mr. Shirey?
Do we have any information from Chief Helms as to where these officers are going to come from? I was under the impression that we weren't allowed just to take an officer straight out of the academy and put them in an SRO program, that they actually had to have time in the job before they could go to SRO.
Chief Helms, are you on the call?
I am. And Mr. Shirey, we, we've, we've had, since we thought this could be coming to light, that it could be a possibility. We've talked to several of our officers to gain interest. We sent a, Major Zachary sent out a department-wide email a few weeks ago, couple of weeks ago, to see if we had any interest, and we had about six officers that are interested, all veteran officers. Also have an officer from an outside agency that is interested, that has SRO, SRO experience. And so, yeah, we feel, we feel pretty good about being able to fill these positions with some experienced folks.
Excellent. Thank you.
And, and again, hats off to the fine staff at the police department. We are so fortunate to have those that currently work and protect all of us. Great job, great job. Ms. Cook?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Can I add one thing? Maybe even some better financial news with this. Because I think they're gonna, they're talking about using one of these SROs next school year at the new middle school. If they do that, then that's money that we won't have to spend, the town or the school district, next year to fund that middle school officer too. So it could, it could kind of work out really well for both of us, for the new middle school too in 2021.
Excellent.
Yeah, it is excellent. And from a historical perspective, this is, you know, not every town works with their school district on doing this. The county is unable to provide funding because of the number of schools in the county. But this is a project that the town of Fort Mill and the school district have worked together for many years and I'm very, very proud that we're able to share that cost and all receive the benefits of it. Ms. Cook?
Yeah, so for clarification, are these positions just at new schools? Or we can use the four positions at any schools?
That is correct. We have to use them at new schools. Well, you just, it has to be a school that currently doesn't have an SRO. So it can be, it's probably, it's primarily going to be elementary schools with those stipulations, yeah.
Okay. And I understand the school district's buying the equipment. Will we technically own the equipment or will the school district?
Well, I guess we'll only, we'll use it, so I'm assuming that we'll own it. You're really talking about, you know, the biggest expense are cars.
Right.
And then, you know, the other things like, you know, body cameras and in-car vehicle cameras and guns and tasers, walkie-talkies and all that. So I, I'm really not sure with the technicality, I don't, I don't know the technicalities with that. I have no idea.
Yeah, so just thinking, Chief Helms, regarding the car, for example, if the school district is paying for it, funding it, but we're responsible as a municipality and the users for the maintenance of it, therefore, you know, it will be technically our vehicle. They're just funding the initial purchase price.
That's correct. And we'll also have those for our use, obviously, you know, during the summer months, holidays, Christmas holidays and that type of thing too.
Okay. Yeah, if we can just clarify that. And then if I understand right, this is just an annual renewal by the state?
This is, this is the first time with an annual renewal.
Okay.
Am I not correct, Jeff?
No, that's, that's correct, that's correct.
This was an initiative by Governor McMaster to assist with providing security in the schools. So this is the first year this has actually been offered.
And so do, for the renewal, is it an automatic renewal into it for us? Just making sure that we're, you know, have it on our checklist, that every year at, you know, April or whatever the deadline is, that we're renewing for this additional funding each year? Or the school?
Yeah, I feel certain that with the, the budget process that we conduct and the current situation that we're in, where we can't really count on what revenue streams will produce for us, we would have to take that into account each year.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you. That's all.
Ronnie?
Yes, ma'am.
Any question, comment?
I'm good.
Okay, Chris Moody? Trudy?
I have no question.
All right, everybody, we have a motion on the table to approve and celebrate. Trudy, how do you vote?
Approve.
Chris Moody? Ronnie Helms?
Approve.
Mr. Huntley?
Approve and celebrate.
There you go. Mr. Shirey?
To approve.
And Ms. Cook?
Approve.
Okay, we're unanimous with my vote minus one. So there we go. All right, we will now move to new business item number four. Consideration to award contract for Walter Y. Elijah Park Project. Mr. Broom will be our expert on that. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion accept new business item number.
Thank you, Mr. Shirey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second. Davey, bring us up to speed. Have we lost Davey? Chris Pettit, are you on the phone?
I am here, Mayor. Davey's calling me, one second, please.
Yeah, we've lost him. Deaf angle technology?
It works great until it doesn't work anymore.
That's exactly right.
Trudy, you look mighty pretty today.
Well, thank you.
I feel like I'm on, what was it, Hollywood Squares? Somebody's trying to ask crazy questions.
Does kind of look like it.
Uh huh.
Mayor, Davey was going to try and reconnect. If not, he'll, he'll just join me in the conference room.
Okay. Socially distanced. That's why it makes me nervous to push any buttons for fear I'll log myself out.
I understand that.
Yes, we found out as you are flipping back and forth with our backup data, it puts you on pause for video.
Ah.
That's why.
Well, I haven't, I haven't hit the pause piece yet. I have, I've muted, but I was a little nervous to hit pause.
I need to find a way so I can not be on the thing and toggle back and forth.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to load it on my computer.
That's what I did, I'm on my laptop and got my iPad.
Yeah. That would work.
That's what I need to do.
Just have to load the program, I haven't done that. All right. Got one more second.
All right, Mayor, we got Davey back in the conference room.
All righty, that's great. Davey, would you like to give us the information, please?
Yes, ma'am, I apologize, I got my, my computer just lost connection. I couldn't get back into the meeting, so I apologize for that.
That's okay.
The Walter Y. Elijah Park Project, this is a project that had been going on for quite some time. It's been in the planning phase for but we have, we were able to, the project, everything, the site plan is completed and we put it out for bid, received, we held a public bid opening and received bids on this project. We had Kekon Wood actually administered the program for us, utilizing our procurement guidelines. So once the bids were open and tabulated, we were sent a, a bid award recommendation letter from Kekon Wood. And it said, since, and Kekon Wood, it was, had checked the bids to ensure that all the required paperwork had been provided, the value of the bid items were calculated correctly, insurity companies backing the bid bonds are, were listed on U.S. Treasury Circular, Circular 570 and all the contracting license for the bidders were active and up to date. They attached these certified bid tabulation for us to summarize the bids. Based on their review of the bids, they recommend town of Fort Mill award the contract to Simon and Watson Construction for the amount of $3,298,509.89.
And where's Simon and Watson from?
Fort Mill. I believe they are a local company here in, or Fort Mill.
Awesome. I like it when that happens.
Yeah, that is good.
Of their three recommendations, one was Fort Mill, one was Rock Hill, and the other one was York.
Excellent, excellent. If at all possible, and when all criteria is met, I love it when we're able to hire locally.
Yep.
Excellent. Do we have a proposed start date?
Once the, once it's approved, we do have, we don't have an exact date, but they will be starting in just a matter of weeks. And they are on a 300-day schedule. So if we can go ahead and get started on the project, we anticipate the project being completed in April of 2021.
So will approval occur with our vote this evening? Or is it a two reading? We have to have two readings or it will be tonight?
Just one reading, Mayor.
All righty then. We'll start with Lisa, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am, let's get started.
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Shirey?
So we, we had a good auction for that. I'm looking through the list, there was eight people who came and bid on that job. I know when I usually collect my bids, I throw the bottom one out and the top one out. Did we do that or we kept, did we, I guess what I'm asking, did we have more than eight?
No, so that, that list is on there, that's everyone that bid, and they just tabulated all, all of the bidders and, and provided the lowest bidder met all of the qualifications of the, as of the specifications of the R P that we put out, request for proposals.
Okay. I'm usually not a fan of going with lowest bid, just because you never know what's going to happen. But I like these guys, they actually do in-house work also. They're not just a full-blown contractor. They actually have their own crews that do stuff, so I'm sure they can curb in some of the costs with, with that. So I'm for it.
Great. Ronnie, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Huntley, do you have any questions?
I guess it'd be ready for the strawberry festival next year, wouldn't it?
If weather, I would say weather will play a large role in how quickly we can stay to schedule. I'm sure they put something in there for inclement weather, but that would be great, wouldn't it?
Yes, that's my only comment.
All righty. Chris Moody?
No questions.
All right, Trudy?
No questions at this time.
All right, let's do the shovel thing, let's do a ribbon cutting, let's do something.
Yeah, exactly. Gwen, I do have one additional question.
Sure.
What was our original budget for this project? And how did this fall with the budget we had allocated?
I'll let either Shontae or Davey address specific information. I know that our budget initially was in two parts. We had a budget for the amphitheater and then we had the restrooms and other items in addition to that. So I don't know the overall figure for all enhancements, but I do know that in this particular case, we were able to get all the drawings and all the information collectively so that we can, if I'm saying this correctly, Davey, we are going to see every aspect that we had planned for completed within this particular figure. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. It was broken into different parts, because you had restrooms, you had amphitheater, you had parking. But overall, the, the overall project is coming in within a budgeted amount that we had assigned to it.
Because I think this includes lighting as well.
Some lighting, Mayor, some, right around the amphitheater.
Yeah, because I want to say the initial thoughts on just the amphitheater were in the $2 million range. One point.
I believe you're right.
Okay. Any further questions?
Will we continue to try to look for additional revenue sources from grants or sponsorships?
Didn't Ray Felder get us $55,000 for something at the park?
Yes. It was, it was the part reimbursement for one of the, one of the restrooms for $65,000, I believe. It was, it was the part reimbursement for, uh, one of the, one of the restrooms for sixty-five thousand dollars, I believe.
I think to, I think to Lisa's point, will we continue for the period of construction to look for additional sources of revenue to offset some of the cost?
Yes, we will do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Lisa, did I summarize properly?
Appreciate it.
All right. Uh, the motion on the table is to approve, and we have a second. Mr. Shirey, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Huntley?
Approve.
Ms. Cook?
Approve.
Trudy?
Approve.
Chris Moody?
Approve.
Ronnie Hales?
Uh, approve.
And I am approving happily and ready to see this take shape and form. And hope we can use it. All righty then, that's a unanimous vote for new business item number four. New business item number five. Council to consider an extension of their emergency ordinance, which allowed town council and other appointed board and commission members to participate in meetings electronically, and also revise the town council public comment procedures during the COVID-nineteen emergency. Uh, this particular expert will be Chris Pettit. Uh, I need a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Got a motion to approve.
New business item number five.
Uh huh, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, let's talk about this one because I would not make a motion, um, until I understand specifically what it is we're voting on.
Mayor, um, back in March, council did approve an emergency ordinance that basically tweaked the language in our code of ordinances to allow for town council and any of our other appointed boards and commission members to participate electronically in meetings, um, as if they were technically and physically at a meeting, uh, in normal times.
Uh huh.
So, um, what this, what that, that emergency ordinance did, it, it lasted for sixty days. Per state law, it can only last for a period of sixty days. So this ordinance this evening, um, i- is also an emergency ordinance, so it can only last for a period of sixty more days. So i- if approved, it would allow the option, it's not a requirement, but it would allow the option, um, for any council or board or commission members to electronically participate instead of physically participate in a meeting. So it, it's certainly not a requirement that says, you know, we're gonna be in this another sixty days, but if for any reason, um, we were in this another sixty days or, or in some phase of this, folks could participate electronically, um, and our meeting would still go on.
Excellent, excellent, because, you know, I, I certainly think to Larry's earlier point, things are changing rapidly. They, they could get better, they could get worse. Uh, I wish somebody had a crystal ball, but, um, yeah, I, I can understand this one particularly. So, um, Trudy, do you have questions?
Uh, not at this point, I don't.
Chris Moody?
So this will mean we will meet, we'll meet in person moving forward with approval?
Options. This allows us the option.
Okay.
For sixty days, we have the option to elect, to meet electronically, uh, with this particular business item. Is that correct, Chris?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. So Chris Moody? Question? Ronnie, questions?
Uh, that, on that same line, it gives us the option to meet electronically, but it, if things change, we can also go to the other way of meeting person in person, correct?
Correct. It just allows us an option, is what I just heard.
Okay, good.
Um, Ms. Cook?
That's it.
Yeah, just for clarification, would the total council, or the boards have to meet in person or virtual? Or could it be partial? So if someone has been exposed to this virus and is quarantined, could they still do a go-to meeting? Or if we were doing them in person?
The, the, there could be any combination of physically present or electronically present. It, it would be one in the same if, if this ordinance was approved.
Perfect. And if we go to being all in person and then we need to go back to virtual, this leaves that open for us, correct?
For a period of sixty days, it would be effective, correct?
We'd, we'd have to up it again if we happened to be in the same position in sixty days.
Perfect.
Lord, I hope we're not. I hope we're not.
Me too. Six minutes would be too long for me. Okay, um, Mr. Shirey?
I have no question.
Uh, Mr. Huntley?
No questions.
Okay, the motion on the table is to approve new business item number five, which would be an extension of additional sixty days for us to have the option to meet electronically if we chose, and it does not have to be the whole of council or committee, but rather could be individual based on circumstances. Um, we'll start with, Trudy, how do you vote?
In favor of.
Okay, Chris?
Approve.
Okay, Ronnie?
Approve.
Ms. Cook?
Approve.
Mr. Shirey?
Approve.
Mr. Huntley?
Approve.
And I also approve, so that will give us a unanimous vote for new business item number five. New business item number six. Council to consider an extension of their emergency ordinance, which temporary clo- temporarily closed all public parks and recreation facilities to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our residents and visitors. Mr. Pettit is our expert. Um, I'll need a motion on this one. I'll make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, you're making a motion to approve that?
I am.
You're making a motion.
New business item number six.
Okay, so you are making a motion to extend, uh, the emergency ordinance, okay? Do I have a second?
A second.
Hey, I've got a motion and a second. Um, Chris, would you like to talk us through this one?
Yes, Mayor, um, just, just like the last one, back in March, council approved an emergency ordinance that temporarily, um, closed all of our public parks and recreation facilities due to COVID-nineteen. Um, that, uh, emergency ordinance is set to expire this week. Um, therefore, it is time for council to reconsider, um, that ordinance, uh, whether or not, uh, it's desired for that to continue, either in whole or in some part. So, um, as an emergency ordinance, it's a little different than a normal ordinance. We can, we can talk this through. It, it doesn't have to be as written, um, approved a- as it was written. It's just extending that temporary closure of all public parks and recreation facilities for another sixty days. But, um, through discussion this evening, we can, um, change the wording for that to whatever council would, would desire, whether it be keeping one park open or keeping, um, certain parts of parks open, um, whether it be discussion to not go a full sixty days. Um, basically, it, it, it's all on the table. Uh, staff has been kind of working through some, some recommended reopening plans. Um, a- and we provided a summary of, of where staff is currently at with, with those recommendations. Um, and, and those are kind of similar throughout the state, uh, in looking at, um, the, the periods of time that the COVID-nineteen cases are in decline, um, and, and slowly reopening based off, uh, continued decline of cases. And, um, the first phase of that, as, as recommended, would be to reopen outdoor green spaces and trails, uh, with the requirement to still follow all, um, required social distancing. Um, and with that, the one item that would still remain closed would be playgrounds due to, um, the, the physical touching of things. Um, but that would be phase one, and then phase two and three, after, uh, longer periods of decline, you'd start to open up the playgrounds and, and some of the athletic fields to, um, local traffic, so to speak. And then, um, with even longer declines, maybe start to open up some of the, um, other facilities. But those are kind of all just in a discussion phase, uh, including your staff report. Um, and with that, I've got Davey and, uh, Brown here to have been answering questions you may have.
Um, I'd like to start first. Uh, it is, um, my thinking that I, I, I do not believe we ever intended to restrict walking on the, uh, trail through town. I, I believe we talked about that in a previous meeting where we have ample opportunity for someone to walk from Sprat Street all the way past the Peach Stand up to Dom Tar and back. Um, I, I very much think that that is a necessary aid to health and, and well-being of our community. So I would like to see us, uh, be very clear that we're not restricting, uh, folks from walking on those trails. Um, because the USTA lifted their concern about playing tennis, as have surrounding counties and municipalities, I would like to see us, uh, lift that on tennis as well. I know that we're expected to get some further guidance. Um, I saw the governor's comments this afternoon, open gyms with limited participation. Um, I, I'm not ready for those things. I certainly will l- listen with interest to everyone else's opinion on that, but I definitely don't think we ought to open the playground equipment at this time.
No.
So would we, I'm fine with phase one, as you discussed, Mayor, um, opening up the parks, the green spaces, as long as people can practice social distancing.
Yeah, and that's a coin toss. You know, there are many, many people that are trying so hard to do the things that show respect to their families and others. And then there are those that, you know, uh, choose their own path, how's that? And, uh, don't, don't feel the same, uh, con- concern for the situation as others may do. I, I love the thing I read recently about, we're all in the same storm, but not necessarily in the same boat. So I, I get that. Um, you know, I, and, and it's not something that we could readily enforce. You know, we certainly can post people and monitor activities, but, you know, it, it would be impossible for us to have someone in every park at every location, um, to, to try to get folks to do what's asked of them. Um, let's go from Mr. Huntley. What comments do you have? If any?
Well, I think we ought to open them up, uh, you know, like you and I discussed afternoon, this afternoon, let us all reason together. Uh, oh man, a mother and a father pushing a stroller through the park, uh, can't have ten feet between them.
Yeah.
Let's, it gives the pu- the stroller a good, hard push. But, uh, uh, I would, I would like to see definitely the parks open, and I don't see anything wrong with, uh, uh, like playing soccer out there. Matter of fact, the last time I went by there, there was a soccer goal out there anyway.
I don't, uh, yeah.
Okay, Trudy, you would like to make comment?
No, I was just gonna say, I saw the soccer goal out there, and I was told later that there was a soccer match going on, and, um, it was reported to the police, and the police went out there.
Um, I think the soccer goals, Brown, you might want to speak up to this point. Uh, I think the ones at Walter Elijah have been there for several weeks.
Yes, they have. We've had them there since right before we canceled, um, you guys put the ordinance, emergency ordinance in effect. We had them out there because we were using those for practice for our rec, spring season.
Right.
Uh, so we just left them out there due to the emergency ordinance of all the parks still being shut down.
Uh huh.
Uh, now, if we need to, we can, you know, we can move those soccer goals to another area, uh, until, you know, the governor lifts the, uh, the participation from a standpoint of, you know, as many people can
Numbers.
athletically and everything, so, um, but I, I think opening the green spaces, uh, would be a good idea. Uh, NRPA, which is National Recreation and Parks Association, is not encouraging, uh, uh, or the CDC or DHEC is encouraging playgrounds right now, but for the open green space, uh, they are encouraging that.
Okay, Lisa?
Yeah, so, um, I, I think part of what we need to do, or what I'd like to see us do, is make sure we revisit this at our, uh, morning council meeting in a couple of weeks because it is changing, very fluid at this point, um, given that the governor is planning in the next forty-eight hours to give some advisement about opening gyms and pools and other recreation. Um, I, I think it's certainly something we need to look at. Um, I do think we need to be specific in our ordinance, and I don't feel like we are at this point, to specify in there that when we talk about a decline in numbers, are we talking about just the state of South Carolina? Are we talking about York County? Just making sure we're clear in what our expectations are.
The other You're speaking to decline in numbers of cases, not
Yeah, that's what the phases mention in the, um, ordinance details.
Uh huh. I agree with Lisa about specificity. We, we, we do need some specificity. And I interrupted you, would you like to continue?
No, you're fine. The, I mean, there is additional, um, concerns, questions, um, and again, this is a very fluid situation, and there's some discrepancies, and you can have a gym exercise outside with social distancing, as long as everybody's six feet away, you can have more than three people gathering to do that. But yet, if you're gonna be out there playing soccer, kicking balls on the goal, it should only be three or it should just be a family. And, and so it's hard to clarify, um, when you're out there, what makes sense and what doesn't. Um, a- and I would encourage and like some more guidance from staff on those situations, as well as when we talk green space, are we gonna do like TDK has done and open up a field for, um, a family to go out there and throw a football? Or are we gonna keep those closed off as well, um, in this next phase? So there, there's a lot of questions, and we knew this wouldn't be an easy one to just push through.
And, uh, Mayor, if I may, um, clarify one of those points. The, within the emergency ordinance, the draft language, um, we did not include, there isn't anything specific to the phases. So all the emergency ordinance language says is, you're closing the parks, uh, and it has an effective date. Um, the, the phasing, that, that was included in the staff report as discussion. Um, you can reconsider the ordinance at any time. So, um, we didn't have a hard, we're gonna reconsider at this point within the ordinance because you can reconsider it tomorrow in ten more minutes or, uh, in July tenth. So we didn't include that within the ordinance itself.
But it would require us being back together, which requires a meeting notice, which requires everyone get together. So
Mayor, the, these emergency ordinances do not require that. You can, y- you have to get together, but there is no notice requirement, uh, or anything of that nature. So it just requires it just requires a quorum of council to get together at a moment's notice to take action on the emergency ordinance. But it has to be specifically about the ordinance. It cannot drift to any other conversation, correct? Correct. It has, it has to be specifically about an emergency ordinance.
Yeah. So how much disagreement is there among us on what we need to do at this point in town?
As far as I'm concerned, uh, the, uh, I'm in agreement with what you were saying earlier is opening up the green spaces, but leaving the playgrounds closed where you have personal contact. Uh, I'm, you know, living this close to the park, I'm by there all the time and watching. And that soccer game that Trudy was referring to, there were some playing soccer, there was about five playing soccer, but there was another football game going on, throwing a football back and forth away from that area. Uh, and a lot of people are parking over at Springs' parking lot and having picnics on Springs' green area.
I saw that too.
So they're also having, uh, people having picnics, uh, up there under the trees in Walter Elijah Park. But I assume there are families, but you know, how do you distinguish between who's family and who's not family? And, you know, when you have, seeing groups together.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's impossible to garner the type of enforcement that some of these ordinances would imply. You know, it's not that they specifically state it, but the implication is there. Um, I was trying to find, I had a letter in my box at town hall, uh, this past week from a ten- or eleven-year-old. He was so eloquent, and he wrote and asked, could we please, um, do some opening of the parks? Because his own yard was, uh, pretty small. And he was asking for our assistance with that. Um, I, I just admire him. I, I do plan to write him back after tonight's meeting to let him know, um, what, what it is we're making a decision to. But, um, you know, I, I do think, again, I, I don't want anybody to get sick because of a decision we've made, but I also don't want to, uh, not recognize the importance. Lord, the money we put into parks and rec and, and hope that we do the right thing. it's for a good reason, it's for a very good reason. It's because it does help with health and well-being. So what
I was just gonna say, I would like for us to consider modifying the ordinance to include the green space and the facilities, except for the playground equipment, as Ronnie alluded to, the physical equipment that we don't know about keeping clean. Yeah, allowing people, social distancing by the governor's standards in the green spaces, but still keeping our playground equipment closed at this time.
Are you making a motion?
For discussion? I'm not sure if anybody else feels the same way, or if it sounded like it.
I do, I would support that as a motion.
Do we do amendment to what we have on the table now, or?
Oh, Lord, I never can remember which way we're supposed to do it.
Because right now, it is mostly been presented to approve what's been written.
Yeah, we'll have to say yea or nay to that motion.
Yeah, we have to vote the original amendment down and then add a new amendment with the change of language.
Yeah.
Is our attorney, is our attorney not present?
I'm here.
Hey there.
Yeah, yeah. The reason I was asking, because he's the one that usually points out, you know, what we have to do first, and then what we have to do second. I didn't know you were there.
It always worries me when you all are interpreting Robert's Rules of Order.
That's why we hate you.
Yeah, the answer is to vote on the original motion, up or down, and then have a second motion to amend in whatever way you want to.
Hey, I'm pretty proud, that's where we were headed, that's a good job. Good job, Council, and thank you for being there, Barry. So
Thank you, Barry.
Let's take a vote on the first motion, which is for a 60-day extension of the existing ordinance. We have a motion on the table to approve and a second. Mr. Huntley, how do you vote?
Nay.
And Ms. Shirey?
No.
Ms. Cook?
Against.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Chris Moody?
Against.
And Ms. Trudy?
Um, I guess, I guess I was reading it wrong.
Oh, it's okay, you just need to vote yea or nay.
Well, I know. So we do not want to take and have an extension, consider an extension, is that correct?
Um, it depends on what you're hoping to accomplish yourself as a voting member. The written ordinance temporarily closes all public parks and recreation facilities. And what the discussion was up to now, over the last couple of minutes, was that we would need to vote that, and then possibly, if the vote went that way, and right now it appears it will, we would do a modification to keep the playground equipment closed down, but perhaps open the green spaces, depending on what motion is put on the table.
I vote no.
Okay, I also vote no. So the motion on the table was unanimously declined. Do we have anyone that would like to make a second motion?
I'll make a second motion for new business item number six, to amend that the town of Fort Mill will open our current parks and green spaces, but continue to keep closed our playground equipment and other facilities.
What about my tennis court?
Yes.
And the activities?
And the activity, what, Jamie?
The tennis courts and the activities. I think any of our enclosed facilities will remain shut down until otherwise stated by the governor, but all of our outdoor facilities, greenways, trails will be open.
Since Lisa's making the motion, Lisa, could you clarify your motion, please, ma'am?
Sure, I'll clarify, but to say, I would like for us to have an ordinance which does open our green facilities, outdoor activities, including tennis courts and trails and fields, and continues to keep closed the playground equipment and other indoor facilities.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Can I add a little bit more to that before we vote it?
Sure.
Until we hear otherwise from the governor?
Until we hear otherwise, whereas stated by the governor with the number of participants.
Excellent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Mayor Matt asks for clarification.
Yes.
So I believe what would be happening with Councilwoman Cook's motion would be, we would be opening, I'm just gonna call, go through a couple of parks just for conversation. We would be opening at Walter Elijah, the field, for people to just go out and passively be out there. We'd be opening the green spaces and the trails, but we would be keeping the playground at Walter Elijah closed. Yes. I guess where I just want some clarification would be, like, at Dobie Bridge Park, we've got playgrounds, I understand they would be closed, but are we saying that we would want to open up the baseball fields, baseball, softball fields at Dobie Bridge Park?
In my opinion, I am okay having those open, given the governor's guidelines to the number of participants allowed, which right now is three or a family group.
I'm in agreement with that. I don't know that we encourage people to go out on the ball fields in particular when, you know, we're preseason or during a season. I don't know how much we encourage that, but, you know, given that that is green space.
I am not saying that we would begin our spring sports at this time, or start renting out fields.
No
Yes, no organized, again, to the governor's standards, right now it's a group of three people, or a family group.
Right.
But is a baseball field considered a green space?
Brown?
Well, let me just address this. TDK, about, I guess, a week and a half ago, opened up their athletic fields, like what Councilwoman Cook, Councilwoman Cook talked about. I've been in contact with Joey Bluth, their athletic, excuse me, their Parks and Recreation Director. The last two weekends have gone pretty good, they haven't had any issues. They've really put, you know, good information out there about social distancing and adhering to the governor's guidelines, so. You know, we can try and see how everything goes and monitor it, and if we have an issue, we can address it. I'm not, we're not gonna rent out any fields, anything at this time, anything like that. We still got all that, those programs suspended right now. So this would just be more for exercise and adhering to the governor's orders.
And in my opinion on that, it also helps so that you don't have as many people at Walter Elijah Park, so you don't have footballs being thrown out there on top of soccer, on top of workouts. I think it would help to spread some of that distancing if we did open up our other green spaces and fields for some of that. And do we have the staff available to help just monitor the situation for us?
Yeah, we can readjust them to staff times and have them come in and keep an eye on that. And we're gonna depend upon the police department, too, on their patrols to help with that also, too. And if, you know, we do have people that violate that, you know, we can contact police and ask them to address that. We don't, we don't have the, technically, the police powers, the Parks and Recreation staff, that, but, you know, we can address it with anybody that's in violation, call the police to do that.
Yeah, again, I think we must ask our community to please, you know, participate in a way that we're working hard to allow and to help everyone. It's really bad when a couple of folks won't, and it ruins it for everyone else. So, you know, being the parent here, I say, please, you know, be wise and do the things that are safe for everyone. Chris Pettit, I believe that with this motion, should we vote it through, that we can revisit as needed, even on a day-to-day basis if we had to. But to Lisa's point, I would like to see us next, every meeting, review the, you know, process that we have in place and the level that we are. So I'm good. Do we have any question from Mr. Huntley or Trudy? Ronnie?
No, that's all I can point out, you do have soccer fields up above Walter Elijah Park.
Mayor?
Yes.
May. One other item I would like to, for council to take into consideration for our parks, if the outdoor facilities open, would council prefer that the restrooms also be open for these locations?
Uh, I'd say no.
I don't think so.
I'd say no to that.
I just don't think we're at a place to where there's enough information that has me feel comfortable that that's a decision that we could base on fact and safety, so I'd say no.
That's also gonna help keep the crowds down. If they have a place to go, the restroom, they're gonna congregate longer. If they're gonna, and I'm looking at this as a place for the people, a destination for somebody to go to, maybe throw the frisbee with their dog for a hot minute and then go right back home again.
Agreed. So we did not include any opening of restrooms in this particular motion, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any further question? Yes, sir?
Mayor, we, staff, what about the, like, picnic shelters?
No.
Do we have those banded off now?
No. We've got, we got
Mayor, this is Brown. We just have right now, the, the playgrounds are secured, and the only other thing is we've got the entrances into the parks barricaded and secured, but we can, we can take care of the picnic shelters, just like we've done with the playgrounds. We can put the orange fencing around those, have those temporarily closed.
Mm-hmm, that doesn't bother me because of the allowance for restaurants to serve people outside. You know, I still think the social distancing, it has to be self-governed to a degree, because we just don't have enough people to go out and monitor each and every person. But I don't see it any different than anything else that's happening right now.
Can I make a comment on the picnic?
Please.
I was in Rock Hill, week four last, and all of Rock Hill area picnic shelters are open. They've been open for two weeks or more, because I used one of them, so.
I think every community is trying to strike a balance for what's correct, and, you know, again, it's really difficult, because there's not a lot of information that's just absolute. Every bit of information we get has a tendency to be different, depending on whom you're listening to. So, you know, it's with caution that we move forward, and I'm very pleased with that. And we'll do the best we can. If we need to make adjustments or alter those decisions, then we will. So, any further discussion? Hearing none. Lisa, how do you vote?
Approved.
Approved. Jamie?
Approved.
Mr. Huntley?
Approved.
Trudy?
Approved.
Chris Moody?
Approved.
And Ronnie?
Approved.
And I also approve. Thank you very much. Mr. Pettit, if you would, when you get a chance, if you would send the written form of that to all of council, that would be appreciated.
Yes, ma'am.
As well as the communication plan for how we'll communicate to the citizens.
Yes. Yes. Okay.
That's four, gunna.
Thank you, thank you very much. Information and discussion items. Information discussion item number one, financial update. Shante, you've been waiting all night for this.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay?
A little bit.
I'm happy to work between my phone and my laptop. And how about now?
That's much better, thank you.
Okay, so what I wanted to do tonight, while you all will be getting the detail on the financials, for the sake of time and for the meeting, I wanted to work based upon percentages tonight. This brief summary is coming through April 30th, and for our, and our target percentage through April is 58.3%. So for our general fund, we've collected 75% of our budget in revenues, and we've expensed 43%. In gross revenue, we have collected 42% and expensed 16.3%. In stormwater, we have collected 72% and expensed 39%. In capital projects, we have collected 21% and expensed 13.8%. In our special revenue collections, concerning our impact fees, we have to date collected $61,658, which is about 9.8%. In our municipal impact fees, we've collected 18.5%. In our Parks and Rec to date, we've collected 13.7%. And of course, you know, this is all tied to new construction. In our accommodations tax, we've collected 34%. And in our hospitality tax, we've collected 53%. We have, we are beginning to see a little bit of a dip in our A tax and in our hospitality tax, and that was to be expected because of the COVID-19 restrictions. So that's the brief summary of where we are. Like I said before, you all will get the detail. So while our revenue collections are near or exceed our target of 58.3%, all of our expenditures at this point are below our target, which is good. So are there any questions of council?
Oh, I have no question.
She has an old-timey phone.
Shante, when do you anticipate we'll receive the updated financials?
In the morning.
Okay, thank you. I can't write as quick as you're rattling them off, so.
No, ma'am, there's no need to do that, you will get that summary as well.
Okay, sounds great, thank you. Are there any areas where you have concern of, or standard or expenses that may be changing in the future?
I think that we've been doing well with our expenditures. Everybody has been cautious in terms of spending. I do feel like with some of our state revenues, we may not get what was projected simply because of what has occurred here of late with COVID-19, but I don't believe that we will be far off. We do have some single line items that have greatly exceeded what budget called for, and a couple of those being our property taxes, our vehicle taxes, and our business license tax, building permits. So we're making a lot of good headway there, but in some of them, I don't feel like we'll meet projections simply because of what has occurred with COVID-19.
I think
You anticipate accommodations tax probably getting hit the hardest?
I do feel like accommodations tax will get hit real hard, and I, and we are seeing some of the hospitality tax, but selling those hotel rooms has been a challenge, I'm sure, because of what has occurred.
Right.
Yeah, and guys, I think any and everyone would recognize that with the quarantine measures, the shutdown, the non-essentials, we're not going to collect the same funds in our revenue streams in our revenue streams that we were. I think it's, it's a very real possibility that people across the nation will be unable to pay taxes. Um, so we have a lot of work ahead of us, but I would like to say that on a positive note, we have remained a very conservative spending and a very conservative, uh, fiscally sound community. We don't go out and do lavish and big things and, um, even though that's frustrating to those of us who would like to see our projects move forward, uh, I think in this case, it was provincial and, and that we are in a, in a better position than we could have been.
Shante, will we know...
Oh, go ahead. No, you go ahead and ask.
When will we know where, um, where we stand on A, A-tax and H-tax as of monthly in April, by May 20th typically?
I would say give it till the end of May because we have some people who pay timely, but we also have some people who sort of bring up the rear and end up paying after the 20th. So I would say a good time to look at that again would be around the end of the month.
Okay.
I would also like to say that, um, we are entering, uh, budget season and we have already started thinking and talking a little bit, bit about being conservative in our projections going forward for next year, and that's with revenue as well as expenditures. So we are keenly aware that the impact of, of COVID-19 and what it may even do going into next year. So we'll be taking a, a real lean look at things as we, uh, continue through the budget process.
I would like to, um, contribute to that as well from the position on our fats and the discussions that are being held on collections. Um, it's across the state and nation that we're going to see a reduction of 30 to 40% of, uh, available funding, uh, for some of the projects that we would have liked to have funded on roadways. And I, I think that's probably a good rule of thumb, uh, that we all should anticipate not having as much funding available to us, um, to carry forward. So, um, I think our budget cycle's going to be an interesting one.
Yeah.
Mr. Huntley, you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Ms. Shary?
I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
I'm great. Thank you.
Ronnie?
Good.
Chris?
I'm good. Thank you.
Trudy? Shante, thank you so much. Um, you know, we will continue to watch with interest as, um, we all squirm with how we're going to do what we need to do, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, information and discussion item number two, introduction of the new Fort Mill Parks and Recreation Youth Sports Athletic Handbook, Brown Simpson.
Mayor, members of council, thank you. Um, I hope you had a chance to read through this. Um, it was about 20 pages long, uh, but we feel like this is an important document that we want to make sure that our participants and the public understand what we do on a daily basis, especially when it comes to, uh, youth sports, which is a big part of, um, what we do in the Parks and Recreation Department. I've got to give credit to our, uh, athletic team, uh, Ryan Wilson, our athletic superintendent, Kevin Reynolds, and Justin Davis, our athletic coordinators. Uh, one of the things I charged Ryan with when we hired him was to put this type of booklet together to let people know, uh, what we do and how the process works, whether we start from registration to post-registration, to player selection, practices, games, awards and trophies, All-Stars, our safety and emergency planning, child abuse, coaches, how we select coaches, background checks, uh, parents and spectators, what we expect from them, uh, our participants' code of conduct, and then our administrators' code of conduct. So it was a lot of, a lot of reading, but we think it's an important document, uh, that we put together, uh, and I'll be glad to entertain any questions about it. We did introduce this on, uh, Friday, uh, to our Parks and Recreation Committee, and , uh, we had some excellent feedback from our, from Mr. Shary, Mrs. Cook, Mrs. Heemsaw. So, uh, I'll be glad to entertain any questions that anybody might have on this.
I have a question on distribution. How will it be given to participants and families?
We will make sure that we have this online and when people register, um, they will be able to refer back to this, uh, document so they understand, like I said, the process of everything that we do with youth sports and how we, um, go through the whole processes of registration, the practices, the games. All this will be a, a, a working document so that they'll have in front of them. And it'd be, I think it'd be a great document too when, uh, if people have questions prior to, uh, registering for, uh, recreation youth sports. So it will always be out and be on our, on our website, in our webpage.
Okay.
Brown, I was, I was just going to say it was a very, uh, well-put-together document and I, of course, don't know everything that you all do, but, uh, it looked like you had everything included. There were so many, um, pieces to it. It was very well put together.
Thank you.
Brown, my request would be, um, to your point, during our committee meeting on Friday, there were several suggestions or, um, comments put in place. So prior to us posting this, I would request that you'd at least send it back out, um, to council and for us to review the final version before it gets posted on the website. And then, as we talked about, making sure that our new website, not only has the handbook, but has some of the important pieces pulled out of this and featured under frequent asked questions or, um, common use areas, um, of the information. So if we can do that, but if you'll just make sure council gets the final version before it gets posted, um, to give that once over, given the suggestions that have come in, either from council or the committee.
Okay. We'll be glad to do that.
Thank you. And council, just so you're aware, one of the things, while this is called the Youth Sports Handbook, we have challenged Brown and the team to make sure at some point it does include some information regarding adult sports and some of the other activities that we have as well. So kind of a phased approach, um, youth being the most common and the most people being used and, uh, most detail needed, uh, but there is an opportunity for him to be able to expand on it in the future in the next phase.
Um, Mr. Huntley, you have any questions?
No.
Um, Mr. Shary?
No, I'm good.
Ronnie? Mr. Moody?
I'm good.
Uh, Trudy?
I'm good.
Um, Brown, thank you so much for this, this level of work. We are really encouraged that we'll begin to see more and more of the organizational communications that I think is always required, uh, for any recreational program. Uh, it, it's a lot to manage with volunteers and children with a wonderful outcome, but it can get, um, it can get pretty disorganized pretty quickly. Um, and, and I look forward to continued, uh, efforts such as this that will help everyone know what their role is and how they can help.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move to information and discussion item number three, Banks Athletic Park Project Update. Davy Brune?
Thank you, mayor. Um, for years, the Leroy Springs and Company, um, provided athletic programs to the town of Fort Mill. I enjoyed many of those growing up here in, in Fort Mill. Um, at the, the, the facility, the YMCA, at the complex, there are three ballfields there that are slated to, um, to be out of use or go away in, in the near future. So, um, to offset those losses, um, the town council has asked staff to move some, uh, planning of the Banks Athletic Park. Um, staff has finalized, uh, our, our recommended site plan for the future Banks Athletic facility, located off Sparkling Grove Parkway and Bank Road. The park will consist of four fields, um, two, uh, baseball fields and two fields, um, that could be used for, uh, softball and maybe, um, little league use. So we would have four, uh, ballfields at this site. Um, there's also, um, a location at the site that, um, we were trying to finalize, um, just recently that pertaining to, um, that would include a basketball court, a, um, large picnic shelter, and a small playground. Uh, staff worked with ESP and Associates to, uh, design that for us. We provided you the, uh, the final or the updated design work of that entire park. Uh, we've also worked in securing an architect for the, uh, facilities, like the restrooms and the scoring towers, or scoring tower for this site. Um, perhaps is that a, uh, at a point where we think that everything is ready to go? We're ready to, uh, put this, um, project out for bid, but we would like, uh, guidance from council as to if, uh, everything looks fine with you, uh, and if you would like for us to move forward with this.
I for one want us to move forward as quickly as possible. Um, I think we've known the, the graciousness of the, uh, Leroy Springs Company and the close family and allowing us to extend the use of the fields, um, you know, that at one point in time were slated even earlier to go away. So, uh, I definitely am, am one for, uh, making sure, uh, that we move as quickly as possible, um, to, to fix that. So, um, this isn't on the agenda as a voting item. Um, any, any thoughts on, should we vote on that, Davy?
Mayor, I think it would be wise to go ahead and take a vote on that and, um, even though it's not, it wasn't a new business item, uh, you can, um, can make a motion, uh, and vote on that and give us guidance on how you would like us to move forward.
Okay. Um, I'm happy to make a motion to, uh, move forward as quickly as possible, uh, with getting the Banks Athletic Park, um, bids, uh, bid process prepared and, and conducted.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any questions? Um, Mr. Huntley, how do you vote?
Approved.
Okay. Mr. Shary?
Approved.
Ms. Cook?
Approved.
Ronnie? Chris?
Approved.
Trudy?
Approved.
I definitely approve. I, I think the, the quicker the better on this one. All righty.
Do you think you could give us some guidance at our next meeting?
Can we just say one more thing about that?
Sure. How come you're talking and your mouth's not moving in the video?
He's learning, he's learning a new job.
Uh-huh. Go for it. Jamie, didn't you want to have something to say?
Oh, yeah. No, I was waiting for everybody else to finish. I know we had, last time we had talked about that, we had taken a lot of stuff out of there and talked about putting the basketball thing in there, but the other thing that Lisa and I had brought up is maybe putting a drop-off loading, uh, driveway on the front side of those two facing the main road. Can we maybe see if that's still feasible? I know there's a fire hydrant in there that, but that sidewalk's 10 foot wide. I'm, I'm sure we can just kind of cheat that a little bit. It just needs to be one lane and maybe bring it into, I think it's Wild, Wildwood or Wildbox Road there so it could dump and come off of the main road, drop your kid off and then exit out there.
Yes, sir. Mr. Shary, uh, to your point, we did, uh, staff looked into that. Uh, look, it, we were going to lose some, um, parking and, uh, after reviewing it, we feel like we can address a drop-off lane, uh, by using a, using cones. So if we rent that facility out as a, uh, tournament play, we can direct, um, participants into the entrances and through the parking lot where, and use, utilize a drop-off zone with just cones. And staff would monitor that.
Okay. I know we were trying to, we, we're putting 10 pounds in a five-pound bag right there, but you guys, it's, it's looking good. I'm very happy with how it is.
Yeah, and I would also kind of piggyback on that to be prepared, if possible, to do on-street parking while, as an overflow. So just how will we maintain that if all parking is full? Um, just being at many parks and tournaments, knowing how many people end up parking in the grassy areas, we don't have overflow if it is full. So just having a contingency plan, trying to look at any additional parking. We just want to be sure that the road isn't blocked because of people having to park on the road.
We're looking at that also.
Okay. Do you think we could have at our next council meeting in a couple of weeks, given that we have the next one, um, the timeline for how we'll be moving forward with this project?
Yes, uh, we will go ahead and, uh, reach out with ESP, um, and I imagine they are going to, we're going to have them administer, um, this, uh, bid process, just like we did Ketchin Wood with the Walker Elijah Park. Um, so we will have our procurement manager work along with us and ESP to get this project underway so we can, we'll provide you an update at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I think we need to vote since we have a motion on the table in a second. Um, we have a motion to move forward on this project as quickly as possible. Did we vote on it already? We did not. Did we?
No.
I think, I think we did the motion in the second. Um, Mr. Huntley, how do you vote?
Four.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Shary?
Four.
And Ms. Cook?
Approved.
Ronnie? Chris?
Approved.
Trudy?
Approved.
And I approve. I'd rather do it twice than not have it done. Okay. Um, information and discussion item number four, installation of guard rail for Fort Mill Community Center. Davy Brune?
Uh, yes, thank you, mayor. Um, the Fort Mill Community Center, um, has had some, the, the property has had some upgrades over the last year. Uh, there was a new parking lot, uh, added, um, like it was just prior to the winter. Um, it is a very nice parking lot, um, but there is a, um, a great change between parking lot for the Banks, uh, for the Fort Mill Community Center and the parking lot for the Fort Mill golf course. Um, there's a probably, I would estimate about a 12-foot drop-off, um, from one to the next, uh, due to liability concerns. Uh, staff is recommending that a guard rail or barrier be placed, um, between our property or the property at Fort Mill Community Center and the Fort Mill Golf Course parking lot. Um, staff, um, reached out and received three bids, um, for the, for this work. Um, and we're recommending accepting the lowest bid from Reynolds Spence and Guard Rail Incorporated for $5,800. Um, a little additional information with that, um, Brown Simpson and I met with, um, the developer, um, for the, um...
Mill Bank.
Yeah, Mill Bank Development today, and they are going to install their decorative fencing, which would go, uh, against, uh, our guard rail shortly after the guard rail is installed. So, um, they are, we're excited about having that fence up. We weren't sure the timeframe on that, but they surprised us today with that information and, uh, and we're ready to move, move forward with it. The, the decorative fencing would not, um, provide any protection, um, from vehicles should they drive off, uh, the embankment. So that's why staff is recommending the guard rail as a security, uh, sorry.
I appreciate you taking care of that. Um, any health and safety issues should be addressed immediately. Do we need to vote on anything, Davy?
Um, mayor, it would help if, um, if we, if you did take a vote just for guidance purposes.
Okay. All right. Do we need to vote on anything, Davey?
Mayor, it would help if you did take a vote just for guidance purposes.
Okay, alright. I'll make a motion that we ask administrative staff to move forward with the installation of a guard rail at the Fort Mill Community Center. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Okay, we'll start with, how do you vote? Mr. Moody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trudy?
Yes.
Ronnie? I guess we just lost him. Ms. Cook?
I approve.
Jamie?
Approve.
Mr. Huntley?
Approve.
And I myself approve. Thank you so much. I think it would be easier for me if we're going to vote on things, if we'll put them up under new business items, please, in the future. Because I get off the railroad, I'm not good. Alright, information discussion item number four. And that was number four. See how easy. Alright, information discussion item number five. Oh, I like this one. Tennis court resurfacing project, Davey Brown.
Yes, ma'am. Again, Mayor, the, this, we added this to the information discussion. We anticipate a little discussion on this topic, but prior to COVID-19, you know, staff had set aside money in the budget for resurfacing of the tennis courts at the YMCA at the complex. The town owns tennis courts that would be used publicly, but in their current state, they are a, again, a safety hazard and pretty much in disarray. A few of the courts have been in large cracks in them. We were, we put this project out for bid and received quotes back. We gave the bidders two options. One to resurface the courts a two-inch base and one with a three-inch base. And we received, two bidders came back. One company, only one company provided a bid for a two-inch surface and a three-inch surface. And then the other bidder just provided a three-inch surface. USPA guidelines require a three-inch surface, but we were, we were just looking to see what cost would be for a two-inch surface to try to see how many years of service we can get out of these tennis courts with that. Based on the quotes that came back, does not appear to be a good choice to try to move forward with a two-inch surface. The three-inch surface, lowest bid came back from Court One, which is a very reputable company. We've worked with them in the past for $260,006. Just for reference, the other company came back with a two-inch base with only just about $11,000 difference less. So it just makes more sense to, we're going to move forward. We just move forward to three-inch court surface. We get much longer life out of it. The discussion item for this is recently staff worked with ESP Associates to provide us a rendering of the available space at the YMCA complex and possible restructuring or relocation of two, yeah, two and a half, three and a half, excuse me, in a, just to set them up in a line, which would allow another space to be used for a future, a future building site or possibly a gym. So the question staff would like to put forward in front of council is, should, would you like to move forward with the current bids to resurface the tennis courts in their current location? Or would you like staff to secure bids for setting up or having four courts surfaced in their current location and having three and a half courts added in line with the other courts?
I'm not sure I understand the term "half-court."
There is a half-court there in its current location with the ball.
Okay, alright, so you're talking about the backboard and we would just make that a full court. I got it. Okay, and would this money include access to restrooms for those participants?
We would. The money that was set aside in the budget could possibly take the current bid of the tennis courts. If we resurface them in their current location, there should be enough funding for a restroom facility on this site. If we were to take it back out for bids, you're looking at, the costs are going to increase based on, you just have to start scratch and building a good base and then adding a surface to three and a half of the courts. So we would anticipate this all rising. And I'm not, I couldn't get an answer on whether we would have enough money left over in the budget to build a restroom facility. We would not have that until we received the bids back.
For those of you that may not play tennis, the tennis courts are indeed in great disrepair. We have a very active tennis program for the youth. We have a tennis pro that works out there. It's a great program that runs through the summer months into the winter. Those of us that are adults and like to play, many of them have started paying fees in Rock Hill to play because that's a wonderful tennis facility, or they're playing inside their neighborhoods. I very much would love to see us do the right thing and get those courts at least safe and then have the facility reflect what I know is our desire to have anything we're offering be. But I definitely have a hard time until I know the costs, a little bit of a hard time moving ahead. The timing is perfect for getting the resurfacing to take place, you know, because of, you know, everything's been shut down, so I just don't know about the programmatic approach because sometimes there'd be 100 kids out there at one time. So timing appears to be good to get that done. But, you know, certainly want to do it the right way and want to have restrooms available. It's tough on coaches and assistants to walk a child from the tennis court all the way around to the front of the complex and down the hall to the restroom when you're talking about kids as young as four and five years old taking tennis. So I certainly have talked about this a lot. I know y'all are tired of hearing it. But I just want to fix it or do away with it, one of the two.
My suggestion or my request of staff would be to come back to us with what the estimated cost would be, given the ESP drawing that's been provided to us recently, which is the linear eight courts with having the restrooms at the end closest to the parking lot. And council, we had also talked or looked with the drawing about having a picnic shelter-type area, covered area. So if campers were out there in the heat, they would have some covered area to go to to eat their lunch or to come in for check-in and registration and pickup. So my request would be prior to moving forward with resurfacing any or some of these to get what the cost would be and the timeline for construction according to the design that we were given, conceptual design from ESP.
Davey, how long would it take? Do you think you could get some type of potential estimate between now and our next meeting?
Mayor, I think we can. We, staff will reach out to these companies, have a discussion on, you know, what the rendering shows and see if they can give us any kind of data on what that would look like in cost-wise.
Okay.
And then also in conjunction with that, we can look at a type of restroom facility. We'll try to come up with as much information as we can by our next meeting to get some more guidance.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I'd just rather know what we can know before we take a vote.
Well, and then we're looking at two different aspects, too. The guys who are going to be rebuilding the tennis courts are not going to be the people who are doing the bathroom. So it's going to be two different bidding cycles that are going to go out. And I think I've already stated, if we're going to continue to build these things, instead of reinventing the wheel every time we build a bathroom, we just need to have an architect draw one bathroom that we all like and that has a universal use, and then we just duplicate that thing over and over again. Instead of having an architect draw one and we build it, then we draw another one and then we build it.
I agree with you, Jamie. I think for the tennis court purposes, however, you would not want to have as large a facility. You know, we're typically limited to a maximum of four people playing on one court each time. So most of the tennis courts that I've attended, they don't have large restrooms like you would expect for a ball field or a playground or the, certainly Walter Elijah, you know. So I understand and I agree with you wholeheartedly. We need to save money where we can.
Right, and I agree with what you just said, but if we look at the one that we're putting at the top of the hill where the soccer fields are going to go, something like that, but we can cut it in half. Instead of having four and, we're having two and two, we can have two, but then extend it out with, as Lisa said, with a, I'm sorry, with a picnic area or picnic cover attached to it. So I mean, we kind of have things in place that we can modify. We just need to have somebody that can sit and modify it for us and we can say, okay, we're doing this with option A or we're doing this with option D.
Yeah. I think in this case, too, we have to have some storage, you know, for the ball machines, the ball hoppers, the things that are required, you know, for the camps. So yes, I agree with you. And it's a good point to make to see what we can do from a duplication standpoint instead of new every time.
Well, and I would suggest we also reach out to the tennis pro and make sure that he's involved in this process and is aware of what we're trying to do and any concerns he may have, too. As well as the National Tennis Association, sure they could help with some estimated budgets and grants. There was some information provided to staff on Friday that I would highly encourage we look at prior to making this decision.
And Lisa, I thought it was wonderful that you were able to secure at least links to some potential funding sources that would help us out. Okay, committee report number one, report of the Ad Hoc Appointments Committee. Consideration of Appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals, two seats. Historic Review Board, two seats. And Planning Commission, two seats. Penelope is our expert and Mr. Huntley is the chair of that committee.
Well, let me start. In each of those openings, we had studying members who were in good standing and we just appointed them to another term. We do have a possibility of an opening on the Planning Commission in several months. At that time, and when that occurs, then we will meet again and act on that one.
Is Penelope still on the line?
Yes, Mayor, I am.
I don't have the committee members that we recommended for reappointment. I think it's important, and thank you, Mr. Huntley, for your summary. We did have each of these members, as Mr. Huntley stated, were in good standing and they have volunteered to continue service. So Penelope, would you be able to, do you have it with you? Would you be able to tell us the two people for each committee?
Yes, ma'am. We did on May 5th, the Ad Hoc Appointments Committee met virtually and they did make a recommendation for Board of Zoning Appeals. They recommended reappointing Jim Thomas to a new three-year term beginning the April 25th, 2020 and will expire April 25th of 2023. The second person for Board of Zoning Appeals was reappointed Amber Bryant for another three-year term. The Historic Review Board, we, the Ad Hoc Committee did recommend reappointing Lewis Roman to a new three-year term. Also Samantha Nifong to a new three-year term. And for the Planning Commission, the recommendation was to reappoint Chris Wolf for a new three-year term and also Heenick Latang to a new three-year term. And just to let the audience know, the Ad Hoc Committee is Mr. Larry Honeycutt, excuse me, Mr. Larry Huntley as the chairman, the mayor, and also Ronnie Helms.
Okay. With that recommendation, I believe we require a council vote to secure that particular recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the nominated candidates as they stand.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, we'll go on a order. Mr. Huntley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Shirey?
Accept.
Cook?
Approve.
Ronnie? I keep forgetting he's not on here now. Chris? Chris Moody?
Approve.
Okay, Trudy?
Approve.
And I also approve. Thank you so much, Mr. Huntley, and Penelope, for having the meeting and definitely a great thanks to all those that volunteer and work so hard on the committees that do so much for the community. Thank you very much.
Um, of staff on that, are we keeping a list of people who applied and weren't chosen for future committees and opportunities to stay involved with the community?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Great. We do keep a running, a running list.
We're always looking for people.
Yes, absolutely. Committee report number two, report from Parks and Recreation Committee, Lisa Cook.
Yeah, so the Parks and Rec Committee met virtually on Friday, May 8th as well. The committee consists of myself, Jamie Shirey, and Trudy Himesoff. We met with the Parks and Rec Committee, the group, to go over several things within the program. Some of it you've seen the results of here, including the handbook. We also looked at some of the programs that the town may or may not be continuing with in the fall when sports start back. As was mentioned in the paper, one of the things where participation has significantly dwindled is with tackle football, but we have seen a rapid increase in flag football. So staff is considering not having tackle football going forward. But that's something that has been done frequently in the area. T G K cut it out about four years ago. So it's not doing away with football. It's just a change, something that's not quite as taxing on the players. We also looked at several other projects, especially when it came to the future for capital projects or needs that we may have. Some of it was brought up here with the tennis courts. But a second phase of the YMCA complex that was promised when we originally got it was adding gym space to that facility. And so one of the questions or one of the requests that the committee has of council is to consider allowing our staff to move forward with additional design work, conceptual drawings for that facility to look at what the space could look like with additional gym space and entrances, making sure that we're keeping it safe for people coming and going, understanding that our access is also access for the Aquatics Center as well as the daycare program that's there. So one of the requests that we have of council, if you would approve, is to allow staff to move forward with that conceptual drawing of additional phase at the complex to see what that can look like for us.
Okay.
Additionally, and we can take a couple of these separate, the other question or concern that we'd like to bring to council is also regarding Toby's Bridge Athletic Park and how that looks for us going forward in the future. Again, conceptually, we purchased the three houses in front of the park and knew that we needed that for additional parking space as well as potentially additional field space and maybe even expanding some of our playground area. There's also a concern for the traffic pattern and safety at that park as people trying to move in and out. So we would also like for council to consider additional conceptual drawing at that facility, too. All of this is in an effort for us to start getting some cost estimates. At this time, there is no minimal budgets for these facilities. It is just a matter of starting the planning process. Okay, thirdly, the last one, again, we were very busy, two and a half hour meeting, but it went great.
but it went great. The last one is also looking at conceptual drawings for the Bank Street Fort Mill Community Center facility. And Councilman Shirey has already been able to secure some resources for us to have those conceptual designs done, probably pro bono, but to allow staff and Councilman Shirey to continue moving forward, to give us some conceptual drawings so that we can start making some additional plans. Again, very good meeting. We accomplished a lot. Certainly appreciate staff pulling the information together for us. And at this time, I would like for staff, or like for council to consider giving our staff the approval to move forward with the conceptual drawings for these three facilities discussed, Dobie's Bridge Athletic Park, the YMCA Complex, as well as the Fort Mill Community Center. And my understanding is from the town manager, we do have budget allocated and available for us for this process. What type of timeframe are you looking for to have this done?
You know me, I'd love it done yesterday. Again, some of this is behind. We've been sitting on the houses at Dobie's Bridge Park for a few years now. I know we acquired them, I think, two budget cycles ago. I know it was before town manager, Brune. So, I would like for us to be able to, if staff is okay, at least reach out and possibly have drawings within 60 days would be nice if that's doable. I'm not sure. I know we've got some preliminary steps. And again, it's not detailed architecture drawings, it's just more conceptual. Councilman Shirey, you've got a better estimate since this is your line of work of timeline you think's adequate for this?
For the park, it could be done in about 60 days. The buildings, we kind of already have a conceptual drawing as of where the gym would fit, so you're going to the next phase of more of a detailed architectural drawing for that, so you're looking closer to 90 days on something like that. Same with a community center. I mean, it's going to take, because people are actually going to have to physically look in the buildings or map out a building and see how it will be used by a person. So, a little bit more time with that. Plus, we don't know how long of a waitlist we're walking into. You know, you can't just go to say, hey, do this for us in 90 days to these guys. So, they might have other projects that are already on a burner, so. But you figure between 60 to 90 days, once it's in hand and we're on their list.
Davy, do you feel like we could know by the end of the month, by the end, or by our next council meeting? Let me rephrase that. Engagement with a design group, I know ESP's been used frequently, so that they can provide us a timeline by our next meeting?
I want, Davy, I'd like to address this before we go that far. I definitely think the type of drawing that they did for the tennis courts and where the gym might fit before we made any investment in that project was very prudent and very needed. I'd love to see them for the other projects as well. But I do think, Lisa in particular, you and I have been working on some charting that shows where these projects fall from the expectation of if we were to have full funding the way we have, when we might be addressing those. That's, there, a couple of them are pretty far out as far as five years, three to five years. I don't have a problem with getting the design, but I do think we have to be very careful on planning how to pursue it and taking on too many projects at once. That sounds terrible. I don't mean for it to sound that way. I just want to make sure that getting those drawings doesn't put us in a position that I don't know what money we're going to have. I just don't from COVID. I agree with you. It was your idea to get the land there on Dobie's, which was wonderful. We did a great thing for the town with that, you know, remove the houses, gravel a lot, that's great, you know, do that for now. But I do think we have to chart out how would we, what order we want to do them in, and then how would we fund it?
Do we have an order yet?
You know, we all took the, how many items was it, Lisa?
Seventy-two, I think.
Yeah, seventy-two items, and we all committed to what we felt like an order for most of those. And then Lisa and I went through that same spreadsheet and tried to sort it out based on projected start and end dates and what we had ongoing and what the start and end dates for those projects were. We've made tremendous progress with it, but the expectation was to use it as we began our budget process. We certainly started, well, actually, the expectation was to use it in a planning session earlier, but this was before COVID struck. So, you know, that has reoriented our thought process a hair, and certainly our checkbook hasn't seen the reflection of what might occur from that. I do think we have to put an order to it and not do them one at a time. We have to do more than one project at a time, or we won't get anything done. But I would like the recommendation of the committee, because I know you put a lot of hard work into that, on what order. And then if we get those drawings, are we going to stick to them, or are we going to have to do them again? I just need to know how we're going to go about that. What's the recommendation of your committee?
Well, and that's the other thing, too, and especially with the community center is, has so many operating facets in it, I don't think we really even buttoned down as to how that facility is going to be used. So, to have an architect go in there and pace it out and, you know, put everything in it, and then I'm kind of in two camps. I'm a big believer in making a wish list and pairing it back, then going in conservatively and realize that we missed something. But I'm, as for the park, I'm just looking for something like we had for the tennis courts and the gym.
Yeah. I'm great on that.
Yeah, my idea was never to get architects involved to that level. It was more conceptual drawing so that we can start putting some estimated numbers and vision to make sure we all agree on the vision. Again, I see many of these having multiple avenues we could go down.
Right. But even with the gym, we, you know, it's like some, we've kicked around the idea of having an upper track, and we've considered not have a track. We've had, I mean, so I think we need to have a hard list of, you know, wish, a hard wish list together first before we approach those guys, because they're, you know, they're, that's their job. They're not going to waste their time on something, and we're going to redesign it 100 different times.
I think, from what I understood, and Lisa, correct me, what you were thinking about was just advancement of the ESP one for the layout of traffic and where the drop-offs would be and the entrance to the complex and starting with tennis courts. Is that correct?
Correct, just seeing what fits there. You know, the way the gym was arranged for us, you know, we discussed during our committee meeting on Friday about rotating it 90 degrees. Does that give us more space and more use? Very similar, and honestly, I hate to say, but I can do it with Publisher or, you know, any graphic program. We can start laying that out and see if council likes the view of it and the vision for it.
But again, are we rotating it for more space? Why are we rotating it for more space? What are we seeing in the gym? I mean, I totally agree, I totally agree with what you're saying, but we need to button down what those facilities are going to operate as.
I agree 100%. And as I asked committee prior to the meeting on Friday, and I'll ask council here, too, feel free to provide me a list of vision that you feel for each of these facilities. I've already done it, not only for the uses, but also the various entities that might be using it, so that we can incorporate that and provide it to ESP. As they're pulling, or whomever the company is that we use to help with the design work. I don't know how else to move forward. You know, I've asked for years to try to have a vision, and until staff provided us with the tennis courts and a gym in this area, that's the first vision we've had for some of these. I'm just trying to be sure that we've got these projects that we've already invested in moving forward and not sitting still to at least get to the point that we can start looking at where would the funds come from and how much would it cost. I understand 100% that the community center is not owned by the town at this time. So, spending the funds that we already have allocated for it is something that we can't do yet, and it doesn't make sense to do because of not owning that. That priority has shifted for us.
That's my bigger concern. That's the only reason I put anything out there in hesitancy, is that one, I'm just not ready to spend money.
I agree 100%. I think priorities have changed. We have three homes that are sitting on the property at Dobie's Bridge Park, one that's being somewhat used as a pseudo-fire station until our new fire station's open, the other two that aren't being used, and I feel like are going to be a potential hazard for us if we don't make some plans to move forward in a certain direction. I also understand that it will be a phased approach for all of this. I would love to say we'd win the lottery for Parks and Rec and facilities that the town of Fort Mill needs, even outside of Parks and Rec. But that's not going to happen. We have to budget, but if we're not even having a vision for our facilities, how can we budget for them? How can we start looking for grants? How can we start allocating our funds and know what we need? My understanding from the town manager at our committee meeting on Friday was the next step for us is for council to provide them guidance on how to move forward. My recommendation would be each one of these, we can take separately, but we move forward with Dobie's Bridge Athletic Park for conceptual drawing. Understanding is that that's not going to take a lot of funds. It may take a little bit of time, but that we do have the funds available through our current budget right now to be able to allocate towards this. Is that correct, Mr. Brune?
That is correct. You know, I definitely don't want to, or intend to be Davy Downer, but we, you know, when you look at Dobie's Bridge Park, there are a few moving parks there. We do have the homes that, we have a RFP, ready to roll to have the homes set out for bid for anyone that would like to bid to purchase the home for removal from the property, including cleanup of the property and a rough grade and sowing grass. So, we can move forward with that at any time. We do currently have a render for those properties where the homes are for a multipurpose field. So, there's, we do have some form of a rendering for it. There are, the overall property itself, staff would just need guidance on what council is looking for with, as Ms. Cook spoke of, the, some of the playground in the back area, some of the parking, some of the hopefully future additions of additional property adjacent to this. You know, we just, we'll be glad to reach out to someone to put together the renderings, but we'd like to know exactly what type of sports council may be looking for for this property.
Lisa, did you in your committee meeting talk about ultimate uses for that particular area?
Yeah, we did. We talked about the area where their homes are, the opportunity for that to be used with a rectangle field, the spacing for parking, the opportunity to change entrances and exits depending on DOT's allowance for us to do so. We also talked about the opportunity to expand our playground area for a more all-inclusive type playground area, as we've discussed in the past. Council in the past has approved making space somewhere at one of our facilities for this, and we've not found a space at this time. And we think there are, may be an opportunity to expand on the current playground we have here to be able to accommodate their needs as well as being close to a restroom.
Now, we did decide when we were talking about that, because I still have all the charts, where we looked at every available space in town that was the right place for the all-inclusive type playground. I also thought we were waiting a little bit to determine some inroads from another developer of a commercial facility at the rear of this park, and the other holdup was how soon are we going to be able to move firemen into the new facility? So, the reason I haven't pushed on this one is I felt like there, as Jamie says, a lot of working parts to this one and to Bank Street, the community center. We just have a lot of moving parts for those. You know, so I think once we can establish a clear path, then we can give appropriate direction, and we'll get it done. I get the passion and the zeal to get it done. I hate waiting. I'm not the most patient human in the world. But I do think we're in a difficult place on both of those from those aspects. It's not whether we can take the houses down and grass them over, just makes it easier to mow grass. It's not providing any additional recreation value at this time. I know you had some concerns, Lisa, about some of the turnaround and parking lot issues back there. You know, I think those things have to, we've got to decide what we're doing. So, getting drawings doesn't bother me at all, but making up our mind what it is we won't draw on does. You know, if we can put the particular characteristics that we're looking for and agree on usages, then I have no problem moving forward.
Who would you like to make that list, then?
I think if you want to make a recommendation from the committee, that's great. And then, you know, if you need to circulate it before we all vote on it, but maybe we could do, if you want to put that together and we look at it the next meeting, that's great. I mean, you're doing a lot of the work, and I appreciate that. But I do think we have to have a little more information on, I just feel like if we put them in order, you know, the gym is going to be expensive to add, and getting the drawings to determine did we have room for it was important. I think Dobie's Park is sitting there primed and ready, but the Bank Street facility, I'm just not willing to spend money until we've gotten a few things tied up on that. That's just me. I get one voice in this, just me. Okay, Lisa, Jamie, and I are talking a lot. You guys pitch in.
I think y'all said enough.
Trudy? Moody?
I'm here.
And I did get a note from Ronnie that he can still hear us, but he seems to be permanently muted from contributing with his computer, so we'll see what's going on there. Lisa, could you put some meat on the bones for the three that you're talking about getting the ESP to draw, and then hopefully?
I think we can do that.
Can you do that?
You think so, Lisa?
Yeah, Jamie, feel free to take it. I thought I'd already done, tried to do that, articulate it, but I'm too moved for it, of course.
Yeah, I think of the, as a committee, we can get together, we'll put a hit list on each project as what we envision it to be, then we can circle it around to council, and if you want to add anything to it to that, we can. And then as a group, we can add or delete from that main list and then hand that over to staff and progress from there. That'd be the easiest way to do it, I guess.
Because I think you've got decisions like locating lighting, you know, that, it'll matter where you're going to shift parking, because initially you had asked us to get those houses because we needed additional parking. So, kind of need to know where that might be, so when we have them draw it, we don't have to have it redone. That's all.
Correct. And we're, and just to play devil's advocate, where we have in mind where the new playground will fit, it may not fit there, and they may have a totally different spot for it to go. So, I mean, I think we don't want to get them too down in the weeds with details that we have in mind, because once they start putting pen to paper, it may totally all change.
Davy, do we have, or Lisa, have you been provided a copy of just the plat for that part with the additional lots that you could draw on?
Yeah, I've already pulled it from GIS, and I've done some drawings myself. You know, my understanding is a little over a year ago that, yeah, I think it was ESP was sitting in the same conference room with Davy is right now. a little over a year ago that, yeah, I think it was ESP was sitting in the same conference room with Davie's right now with a potential drawing for us, but we haven't moved forward with it any addition, any further. Um, but again, I, I would love the opportunity to sit down with ESP and staff, Parks and Rec Committee, whomever, and, and let us talk through this. I've got a list on paper. It's been provided to the Parks and Rec Committee. It was provided prior to our meeting last week and we've discussed through the concerns and the ideas that we could have. It's like I told them, it's like watching Property Brothers. We can all make a list of all the things we want out of our home, but until somebody with the expertise sits down with us and says, this will work or this won't, then we don't know what decisions to make. So, yes, I have a list of those. Um, we have considered it and we've talked about it for over a year. So I'll be happy to circulate that list to all of council and then we can move forward if I understand how to move forward. I, I don't know how at this point.
I think you're making progress, but I think just like with your example of Property Brothers, they don't do anything without a budget, nothing. They don't start without a budget. So we've got to figure out where the money's coming from and at what point in time. So that as we, we, cause I don't have a clue with what we're collecting on H-Tax impact fees, because I think everything has slowed considerably. So, you know, where we were projecting before, we might have money. I don't know where it'll be. I'm not saying it won't come. I'm just saying, and, you know, you've mentioned before that we might need to do a bond referendum and, you know, I, I certainly think there's a lot to be said for talking through these things to the point that we get them on a long-term schedule and we move forward. So I'm, I'm not trying to stand in the way of it. I'm just saying, let's use a, an approach that we don't have to keep going over it and over it for years.
Again, most of the capital projects we do are phased, so to your point, yes, we can find some of those. We can look for opportunities to get revenue, whether it's sponsorships or grants or from our capital funds. There's a lot of avenues out there for us.
Yeah, I, I'd like to think that those avenues are still there, but, uh, until I see a little more recovery in the economy as a whole, I don't know.
I don't have a current budget from town at this point right now to even know where we stand. Again, we're being promised, and I know Shontay sticks to her word. She's great. You know, we'll have it for tomorrow, but, you know, it, um, got one hand tied behind my back. So we, we can certainly cut it into the conversation now. I appreciate council hearing what's going on with Parks and Rec. I'll be happy to circulate the list of uses and potential opportunities that we have. And we'll just start with Dobie's Bridge Park. We won't even look at the other two at this point. So, um, Jamie, the work that we're doing that, that you started at the community center, we may want to put them pause for a while until we're ready to move forward with it.
All right.
I, I just think it's difficult, um, when we all want to contribute and we all want to do what's right, but we all have to vote on it. So let's, let's try as a council to get our arms around how to move forward instead of just incessantly having each person work independently and spend a lot of time and effort on it, but we can't ever agree on it. So let's, let's try to do that. With that, um, Trudy, what do you have for the good of the whole?
Um, I wanted to ask Davie a question, if I may.
Sure.
I just wanted to check. Um, can you hear me, Glenn?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I just wanted to chat with Davie and see how, um, how the employees are, um, managing or how they're handling their schedules now, you know, working from home or even those that are not working from home that are still um, working out of the office, I guess you'd say. Um, I know some of them are working overtime, maybe long hours. Um, how are they, um, handling all that? Are they doing okay with it? Are there any issues?
Uh, Trudy, everything is going well. Um, our staff has, uh, jumped in and embraced the, uh, modified scheduling that we have, uh, we put in place weeks ago. Um, you know, they are, um, making the, uh, the most of their time when they are in here. Um, again, they're alternating days when they come in and when they're, when they're, uh, at home, but, um, you know, the, the staff that, that are alternating and, and working from, uh, the days of coming into town, they are keeping our uh, town beautiful, uh, keeping our services moving forward. Uh, we've not had a dip in any of our production for any of the services that we're providing, uh, our residents and our utilities customers. Um, this, the dedicated staff that has the ability to work from their homes, uh, has the, um, technological uh, means to do that, they're working on a daily basis from their home, planning and zoning. Um, our, uh, public relations and events. Um, we have staff members that are, again, alternating from home, uh, and working in the office. So uh, everyone that can be working is working. We do have some crews, again, don't have the ability to work from home as our, uh, we're crews in public works and utilities. Um,
Right.
So, but everyone's doing great. Um, again, I'm just so proud of them because we have not seen a dip in our services. Um, everyone received no complaints and, um, you know, that, because of that, it gives us the flexibility to take a way to the approach with this COVID-19 crisis. Um, we're not abiding at this moment with, uh, providing our services. So I'm just very proud of each and every one of our, uh, town staff members. Uh, they are keeping us going.
Um, the ones that... Yeah, when will we see, um, recommended phasing? Um, and I know it's, again, it's a moving target. It's a freaking moving target. But, um, I know you guys have been working collectively on some type of process. Uh, I know other communities have, so we probably don't have to recreate the wheel, but, uh, when will we as a council see something that we might consider?
Mayor staff is, uh, we're hoping to have this plan pulled together by the end of the week. Um, so that we can get it in front of, uh, you very soon. So uh, I would say at the very least by our next meeting, but we can get something right into you next week so that you can at least, uh, review our recommendations.
Appreciate everything everybody's done.
Okay. All right. That sounds good. Trudy, did you have other, other items?
That was, uh, that was mainly it. And the folks that, uh, like you were talking about, public works and the folks to take care of the, um, landscaping and stuff, are they required to wear, uh, masks? They, they don't have, that's usually if, if you're, um, associated with other people or in stores and things like that or inside.
Close proximity.
That's correct. And if they can practice, uh, we, we, we're stressing social distancing, practicing social distancing on a daily basis. So when they're out in the field working, they, they can socially distance properly and get the work completed. Uh, what we have been able to do is secure some, uh, some masks for the times when they can't practice social distancing. Uh, like riding in vehicles together from one job site to another. So, uh, during those times, they are using, um, uh, masks for that. Um, and, you know, in our overall plan, you'll see that we will, um, when we look at reopening, um, possibly having, uh, masks provided to all staff members that come in close to contact with the public. So uh, we'll provide all of that in our details, uh, as we move forward, but, um, yeah, we, we're, we've been able to secure some PPE or protective equipment, uh, maybe to our staff members.
Okay, just, just kind of wondering about that part of it, since they're not, uh, cooped up in a building with someone, you know, with other employees, so.
Yeah, totally.
It, it's kind of comical sometimes, uh, especially here at Town Hall with the limited staff we have. If we see each other coming in the hallways, we don't know where to go. We just kind of stop and...
I'm sure. I'm sure.
We are practicing social distancing at every opportunity.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Okay, Chris Moody?
Good to see everybody's smiling faces. So, um, this is a good meeting. We got a lot accomplished tonight and Davie, thank you and the staff for putting everything together and working under circumstances. I know it's, uh, uncharted waters for us all, but maybe we'll get a good, um, you know, as we mayor mentioned and others, a good trend line on where, where our budget will be once we close out the books in April. And it'll probably take us a few months to see where things are to stick, to start looking forward to next year's budget to see with the way things are trending and, uh, know what we're dealing with, you know, so, but thank you. Good to see everyone.
Ronnie, I'm sorry that you can hear us, but we can't hear you. Um, but I see you just sent me a message. Um, Ronnie says he appreciates everything everybody has done and he hopes that we stay safe and have a good week. So, uh, thank you, Ronnie, for communicating it with what we have. Lisa?
So I was curious where we stand on the current fire station construction project. My understanding goes we were supposed to be finished already. Where, do we have delays or where we stand?
Well, the current construction projects like the, uh, the, uh, Fort Bel Air Station Two, uh, they are, they've gone through the punch list. We, and they're doing final walkthroughs, uh, today and tomorrow, so we hope to, uh, have the CO, uh, very soon. Chief Wilkerson is very anxious about getting his crew members moved over to that facility quickly.
Great. And then also wondered where we are with the water tank progress?
Uh, the water tank progress, they are also completing that, that process. Um, I do not have the latest update from, um, the city's director, Greg Rushing. I do not believe he's on the call, so I can, I'll send an email out giving an update on that tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, there, there's a theme here. The water meter project?
Water meter project is moving along very well. Um, we got through, um, well over half of our, um, our, uh, building customers and the change out of those meters, from COVID-19, and we were not able to, we had to suspend that, um, that program temporarily until, uh, we can, uh, operate and that program can be operated in a safe manner. Uh, the company that was, that we contracted with did not feel, uh, safe with the operation of their employees, uh, doing that, being in close proximity um, with our staff and the public. So it has been, it's been rarely put on the hold.
Okay.
What percentage, I'm sorry, Lisa, I'm, I'm sorry. What percentage of meters are installed?
There, on our last update, it was well over 50%. Um, if I had to estimate it, we were probably at 60 or 60 or 70% by now.
And, and Lisa, I'm sorry, I'm just treading all over your time, but I think it's a really good time to point out that those that have received new meters. Um, I have heard several folks in regards to higher than anticipated billing. Um, I think it's important to note that our billing cycle this time was longer by five or six days than the last one. And that with the new meters, uh, any mechanical, uh, equipment slows with age and, uh, the new meters are calibrated and are operating at 100%. So you're likely to see some increase based on those two items, uh, but hopefully that'll level out. So Lisa, I didn't mean to jump in on your time, huh?
No, you hit what I was going to ask about. Um, and, you know, I hope maybe at our next meeting, we can have a little bit more formal update on these and just know where we're at on the timeline with our various projects. I know you and I talked previously about the Tyler updates that we've got going and just knowing how far along in that process we are. Were we able to pick up any ground since business has slowed down a little bit? I know you said you continued to do some training for that program as well. So more than anything, it's just knowing where we're at with our capital projects. Um, Shontay does a great job of saying, you know, our goal is 58% this month and we're above or below. We'd love to be able to see that with our timelines and capital projects as well. We know there's some shifts, COVID's, you know, affecting everybody's lives, but just kind of to see where we're at with that, especially now that we're going into a budget cycle.
Yeah, we'll make sure we provide an update at our, um, next meeting. Uh, we, I did not add that to this meeting just based on
There was a lot.
We had discussed.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Yeah, we're, we're getting on three hours now. Um, Jamie?
Uh, I just want to thank everybody, uh, staff and everybody.
We're passing the rec committee meeting.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jamie.
I said, I know it's not easy with what we have been doing, but, um, um, thank you for staff and everybody for getting us together. And I can't wait for it to get back to normal.
Yeah, me too. Me too. Larry?
I second what Ronnie Hammond said.
Okay. Um, I jumped in on Lisa's time to share the one item that, um, I wanted to make sure that we covered. Um, please, everyone, uh, that watches this afterwards, know that there's a lot of effort and work from staff, uh, from our counterparts, uh, from committees to individuals. A lot of work goes into ensuring that we do our, our very best. It doesn't always show up, uh, in paper, print or, or schedules, but it's not, that it's not our goal. Uh, we certainly do. Thank you to all employees for staying the course and, uh, putting us in a good position to face, uh, the unimaginable that we have. I look forward to our next meeting. I've taken some good notes on the things that we will round back to and, uh, get some updates too. So thank you all. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'm making that motion.
Could I have a second?
Second.
All righty. Jamie, do you vote yes?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Trudy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And Ronnie just said yes. You have to laugh or cry, one of the two. I don't know. All right, you guys, thanks so much for all that you do and I look forward to, uh, two weeks. We will, uh, circle back around and, uh, make further progress.